Leave the ball.
I have a couple every morning.
All right, ready? All right, good evening. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the September 25th, 2025, Apple Valley City Council meeting. Welcome everyone this evening. For any members of the audience who have signed up to speak when your name is called, please approach the podium to address the council. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask everyone to stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, thank you, everyone. The next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda, and Tom, I know there were at least one other additional item distributed this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, we have two items to update you on on your agenda. These were distributed yesterday. We have item 4E. This is on your consent agenda. The truth in taxation supplemental insert has been revised and distributed to the council, so that would be an added item under item 4E. And then also on the consent agenda, under 4HH, we have approved the First Amendment to Purchase Agreement for the city-owned Fraser parcel, Lot 1, Lot 2, Block 1, Fraser addition. And this is an extension to the timeframe of the purchase agreement. No other terms changed. With that, those are the suggested revisions to the package tonight.
Great. With those changes, do we have a motion to approve?
A motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grandal, second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda carries, the next item is our audience participation portion. This is for items not on the agenda. Anyone who would like to speak to this portion of the meeting? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or citizen requests to pull an item. Tom, you just mentioned 4E, which is our truth in taxation notice and the additional material Ron prepared. No need to pull it, but I think we'll talk about that in the staff updates and just see a little of what Ron put together, because I think there's some excellent work there and good information for our citizens. So with that, council members, are there any items you would like to pull from consent? All right, citizens, any items to pull? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Melander, second from Councilmember Grandal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us on to our regular agenda and our first item, which is 5A, and this is Chief Nelson to proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week.
Evening, Mayor, council members. So we're here to talk about Fire Prevention Week. So I guess to start with, I'll read the proclamation, and then I have some information about the activities the fire department will be participating in for Fire Prevention Week. So proclamation, whereas the City of Apple Valley is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those who live in Apple Valley and visiting, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks, and whereas most electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. Whereas the National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA, reports an increase in battery-related fires underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. Whereas residents should follow three key calls to action: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, an improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire and explosion. Whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries helps prevent environmental hazards and reduces fire risks in the home and community. Whereas Apple Valley first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach, and whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home, serves to remind us the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in the homes and communities. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through the 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week. Proclaim this 25th day of September, 2025.
Thanks, Matt. Before we move on to the activities, do we have a motion to approve that proclamation?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grandal, second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, proclamation is passed. Matt, what's going on for Fire Prevention Week?
So a bit lengthy, but again, trying to talk about lithium ion batteries is really the big push this year. So we're at our, during Fire Prevention Week, we're obviously going to talk about the Fire Prevention theme with lithium ion batteries. So during that being Fire Prevention Week, the firefighters will go out to each of the elementary schools in Apple Valley, talk to each of the kindergarten or pre-K through 5th grade students, teaching them a bit about fire safety. And then we're also going to have three open houses, so the public's welcome to come to one of our open houses. We're going to have them at fire stations 1, 2, and 3 on Tuesday, October 8th, Wednesday, October 9th, and Thursday, October 10th, each night at a run from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They can come out, they can learn a little bit about lithium ion battery safety, ask about the fire department, our trucks, equipment, have some games for kids to kind of play or interact to learn a bit about, a little bit about fire safety. We'll have some treats there from Culvers, bring in some custard. It's always a big favorite for the kids or adults that come. So I hope the public can make it out to one of our open houses, or maybe more than one if they want, so.
Great, thank you. A little lot of fun, always is.
Yeah, I think.
Appreciate it. Thanks to all the firefighters who give us a little extra time to pull these events together this week. Next item is 5B, which is our Valley Station Apartments, and Terry has this one. You were asking for a long meeting earlier before we started?
No.
What you said?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. So tonight's agenda item is the Valley Station Apartments Development Proposal. This is on a site that is actually owned by the EDA. And last year, there was RFP that was issued for the development of the site, and Real Estate Equities had a proposal that included a five-story affordable workforce housing apartment project, and that was chosen, and they subsequently executed a purchase agreement. The developer moved on and submitted his applications for text amendments to PD 507 and also site plan and building permit authorization. So this item went to the Planning Commission on July 16th for the public hearing, and then they recommended approval of it on September 3rd. The site, which is often referred to as the Gaslight Site, is located at the southeast corner of 155th and Gaslight Drive. The surrounding land uses are townhouses and the apartments to the east, the transit stations to the north, apartments on the south side, and then commercial to the west. The land use, the future guided land use, is suburban intensive, high density. That is a land designation that allows between 24 and 48 units per acre. The zoning of this site is PD 507, Subzone 2, and as I mentioned before, they are asking for seven amendments to that PD zone. Those include reducing the setback along the neighborhood Collector Street from 40 feet to 25, increasing the maximum density per acre from 16 to 48, reduce the minimum square footage of land required per unit from just over 2,700 to 916 square feet, allowing the building coverage to increase from 20% to 30% of the lot, increasing the maximum stories from three to five stories, and the maximum height from 45 to 60 feet. And then also, which it's, I think it might be hidden on the screen, they're also requesting a, to allow a flat roof, and that would be amendment to the minimum roof pitch standards. The site plan for this is, it's a 3.1 acre parcel. The building footprint is just over 55,000 square feet. Again, as I mentioned, five-story, 144 units. The access will actually, there's two. One will be from the north on 155th Street, and then the second one is from Gaslight Drive, where vehicles will actually enter and drive under the building, just the upper levels, into the site, with the parking lot facing the east. They are providing 250 underground and surface parking spaces, which is 1.7, four spaces per unit. They will have underground stormwater retention system, and the amenities that they're providing on-site include a patio and grill area for the residents, a tot lot, bike racks, dog run. They also are going to have an indoor playground for the younger children also. The site also provides walkways connecting to the existing sidewalk around the perimeter of the site, with those being three connections. Staff did have one recommendation that they changed on their site plan, which is included in the conditions, is to extend the sidewalk that's located here on the east side of the building and make that connection also to that existing sidewalk. The landscape plan that they provided has a nice mix of different landscape species. They will be installing a six-foot-high privacy fence along the east property line to screen from the adjacent townhomes. The interior of the site will also have black ornamental fencing that'll be located around the dog park and the tot lot, and then as some of the barriers that are required above the retaining walls. So the site will need to have landscape improvements that equal the 2.5% of the building When this was presented to the Planning Commission, there were concerns that came up at the first meeting. That included some density, parking, the number of stories or the height, and then also there was concerns about the parking and the traffic impacts. After the planning commission meeting, the developer did make quite a few site changes. He reduced the number of units from 148 to 144, which brought the density down to 46.45 units per acre. He added 11 more parking spaces on the site, which increased the per-unit parking ratio. They also lowered the building on the northeast corner of the building, just to kind of limit the, diminish the impact to those adjacent homes, and I'll show that on the elevations. But they also submitted a traffic and parking analysis that staff asked for that looked at the parking and traffic. For the parking, they used the ITE Parking Generation Manual to evaluate if there was enough parking on-site, and that study determined that it would be within, the 85th percentile peak parking range is 202 to 235 spaces, and then the average demand range would be 144 to 166 spaces. So that assessment did determine that the proposed parking was sufficient. And then for the traffic concerns that were brought up, they evaluated the traffic volumes, the crash history, and the intersection capacity, and they determined that after development, this intersection would still operate at a level of service of B or better, and that the intersection also would, did not indicate that there would need to be any existing or future, a traffic signal, signal, or an always-stop condition there. As I mentioned before, this is an affordable workforce housing development, and this is just kind of an overlay of the program itself, which includes, the program includes incentives to the developers and the investors, which provide tax credits for them to build affordable rental housing. The program targets working families to provide that affordable housing forum, and the rents are determined by the area median income, which is recalculated every year. And then to qualify for this, this program's a little bit different, because they do need to meet the minimum income requirements to participate in the program. And just part of the program, their incentive is to help improve residents with their financial standing and potentially move to homeownership. So on the screen, you can see I have the number of units and the different types, and then also what the income restrictions are based on the number of households. This is the architectural of the site looking from the northeast corner, and the rendering is, doesn't show exact, probably as well with the tree, but they reduced the height at the northeast corner of the building. I'll show another. This is the elevation looking from the southwest, and here's that access going under the building into the parking lot. And then this is a better rendering of showing the step-down of that building, and then this, on the east elevation, is showing that privacy fence that they planned to install. And this drawing is, or rendering is, just of their proposal, an overview of it.
May I ask a question while she's got the picture?
Yeah, go ahead.
Question I have, and you brought it up, is the setbacks from 40 to 25. Could you explain and show where it's at?
Correct.
On one of these maps, please.
One more.
Okay, so that is on the north property line on 155th.
Go on, okay.
So that required a 40-foot setback, and they're asking to amend the code to allow 25-foot setback.
So it looks like it allows you to have a patio and the tot lot and some of those things that you would have consumed with, without, with a bigger setback.
Correct.
And I was looking at it just to make sure it wasn't impeding on the residents to the east. I get Gaslight and that, so thank you.
Yeah, so they're not asking for any setback reduction on the east side.
Thanks.
So with this application, staff is recommending approval of the following actions: adopt the ordinance amending Article 18, Plan Development Number 507, and recommending to waive the second reading; adopt the resolution approving the plan development agreement; adopt a resolution approving the development agreement; approve the stormwater maintenance agreement; and adopt a resolution approving the site plan review and building permit authorization. So I can answer any question you have. Also, the applicant is here with his architect and engineer. Questions for them.
Let's start with questions for Terry from council. Anyone have questions for her?
Yeah.
We'll start with you, Councilmember Melander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 2.5% landscaping requirement, this is a pretty expensive building to put up. Are they able to meet the 2.5%? One time, I know, we were talking about public art pots with plants and things like that. How did they, how did they do that? How'd they address that?
So their, I don't know the exact figure, but their landscaping requirements are just over 600,000, and their private tot lot will be able to count towards that, their plantings. That final number gets, and their improvements gets finalized with the building permit, so staff will work with them to make sure that they're getting to that amount.
Other questions? If, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
There are times where in order to meet that, they put things too close together, and the plant really doesn't make it, you get coming looking plants in a short time, or they plant a bigger plant that doesn't take the transplanting and things like that, so.
Correct, and we'll watch for that when they submit their plans, that they're planting their correct, like, plantings in the correct locations, so that they survive.
It sounds like we've granted some flexibility to allow things like the tot lot and other amenities that might not make sense in plans, but add to the usability of the building, so.
That's what I'd like to see.
Yes.
Perfect. Any other questions for Terry? If not, we'll take the action items here, and then if the applicant wants to come forward and say anything, we'd be happy to give him an opportunity to do so. So with that, we have a number of items, and, oh, thank you for having the slide up. We have a number of items in front of us. We'll just take these one at a time. The first is to adopt the ordinance amending Article 18, Plan Development Number 507, and that includes waiving the second reading. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, second from Councilmember Melander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That item carries, we'll move on to the second item, which is to adopt a resolution approving the plan development agreement. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Motion from Councilmember Melander, do we have a second?
Second.
From Councilmember Grandal, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that item carries. Number three is to adopt a resolution approving the development agreement. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Melander, second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries, and then we have a motion, do we have a motion to approve the stormwater maintenance agreement?
A motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, second from Councilmember Grandal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That item carries, and finally, we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving the site plan review and building permit authorization.
A motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, second from Councilmember Melander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? They all carry, thank you. Do we have anything else on this item? I think they got them all. I know our applicant, would you guys like to come up and say a few words, as long as we have you here?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. My name is Blaine Barker with Real Estate Equities. Don't have much to add today, other than to say thank you for the EDA's support, the council's support, staff, and planning commission. We know there were some items to work through, and everyone's been great to find solutions and, you know, a path forward that everyone could be happy with. So we're just very grateful. We look forward to closing on our financing in December probably, and then breaking ground in January. So just want to say thank you to everyone who's.
That would have been everybody's next question, when are you going to start work? Great, so. I appreciate you working with Planning Commission and staff and addressing some of the comments that came out that makes it a little easier on some of the neighbors. And then I like to see, so, you know, the amenities are nice in there too, right? To have something on just a building and indoor and outdoor amenity. My only question for you is parking, right? I'm glad we can get to a reasonable parking number. What do you do to manage that so you don't have overflow out in the street? We see that in some cases, we reduce parking, and then people have four vehicles, right, in the apartment, and that impacts everyone. Can I just have a way to manage parking a little bit in there?
Yeah, so to add some context, we're typically building about 1.7 to 1.9 stalls per unit at our developments that are very similar unit mix as this. So we're within that range of what we're used to building, and it's worked great. Also here, we were aware that there were some parking concerns, so one item that's unique about this development compared to others we've built is all of the garage parking's going to be included in the rent, whereas we typically have a separate charge for that. And so then there's just naturally some spaces in the garage that go unused at other properties when that's not really going to be the case here, because it's not a separate charge.
Perfect.
So we feel confident with the parking ratio based on where we got to through our changes, and then that kind of unique element of it.
Hope that's helpful. We don't want too much parking, but you don't want them spilling out in the street and taking the neighbors up either, so it's a hard balance. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, that takes care of our, takes care of our 5B, and that brings us to staff and council items. And, Tom, I know we had a couple. Do you want to start with yours, or do you want to have Ron come up and talk about the budget insert first?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have three staff members that would like to speak tonight. Why don't we start with Finance Director Ron Hedberg to talk a little bit about the path from here to November 25th with the adoption of the 2026 budget.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. One, the item on the consent agenda was the truth in taxation insert, which, if you remember previous years, looked much like this. The one change that was made to that notice that was distributed this week was to add a budget open house on November 18th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. That would be held here at the municipal center in the Regent Room, where it would be open house format, where people can come in and just ask questions of staff and any council members that may be there. The purpose of the, of the whole budget really is preserving our investment in our infrastructure and buildings. We've got an aggressive street maintenance program. Since the start of that program, we've improved 118 miles of streets within the city. We've got investments in the park system and public buildings, which are impacting our levy for the coming year. The 2023 park referendum, of course, the debt is being issued over multiple years, and it will impact the levy going forward. Some of the other facility improvements that are also included in the levy is the debt service for the facility improvement, capital improvement bonds for the fire stations, the police operations building, and the upcoming central maintenance facilities. That'll be happening in the next, over the next year or two. Again, an invitation to attend the budget open house Tuesday, November 18th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM here at the Municipal Center. One other distribution, which we wouldn't, we won't be able to include it in the truth in taxation notice that goes to the individual properties, because we are limited to one-third of a page. Get to use both sides, but one-third of a page in Dakota County, which, what I learned in looking at other cities' inserts is they don't, Hennepin County, for example, you get two pages, two full pages, so. And it gives you a lot more room to actually present some more palatable information, I guess. But one of the, the things, the other item that we added to the truth in taxation notice is a link, I took it off there, will be a link to a budget brief, which I distributed a draft. We've, it's still with Eve. I call it mutifying it for public consumption, so hopefully we'll, or not hopefully, we will have that available on the website. There'll be a QR code on the insert, where they can use that insert or QR code to take them right to a budget and brief, and then within the budget and brief, we'll have a QR code that'll link to the full 2026 budget. Some of the principles that guide us each year in our budgeting is focusing on basic city services, estimating our revenues realistically, maintaining strong reserves, anticipating community growth, and really maintaining our existing infrastructure responsibly. You know, total budget, this is on the revenue side, $115 million, which includes, it's a total budget, so it includes the enterprise funds, all the special revenue funds, the other governmental funds, and we can see that user and franchise fees, which includes, for the most part, our enterprise funds, including the liquor operations, makes up 35% of the budget at $40,942,000. Property taxes makes up of the total budget 38 million, or approximately 33% of the budget for the coming year, and again, all the other revenues, and we have to balance these with the necessary expenses each year. The levy is, the preliminary levy that is, was certified by the City Council and distributed to the, to the county auditor, it shows an increase of 13% for the coming year. Six and a half percent of that is for general operations of the general government. Six and a half percent of that 13% increase, debt service, which includes the park referendum bonds, the increase in the debt service for that, as well as the facilities capital improvement bonds. Those two are making up 6.7% of the total levy increase. So over half of the increase in the levy this year is, is just related to the increase in the debt service for those two projects. Kind of a graphical image of what do I pay for in my city taxes? This is on a median value home, $371,350 for tax payable 2026. Approximately $572 will be for public safety, park and recreation, $178, $190.78. Public works, approximately $378. General government, $272, and debt service, $285. And again, invitation to attend the budget open house on November 18th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM here at City Hall, and of course, if anybody wants to see both the, any of the budget information, as well as previous budgets, annual financial reports, you can find that at applevalleymn.gov.
Thanks, Ron. You did nice work on this, and glad we had a little chance to show it off and talk about it.
All right, thank you.
All right, Tom.
Mr. Mayor, next up will be.
Sorry, do you have questions for Ron? I just buzzed right past. Sorry, do you have questions for Ron? I just buzzed right past that. So sorry about that. No? Okay. Go ahead. Our media meeting after, I guess I'm trying to move us along here.
So we have a special event coming up with the Apple Valley Municipal Liquor Store. I would like to invite up Rick, our director for liquor operations, and Noel perhaps as well, to tell everybody about this event that is coming up on October the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. On behalf of the Apple Valley Municipal Liquor Stores, we're here to let everybody know about a special event on Tuesday, October 7th at Revolve Hall. We're really excited about hosting an amazing food and wine pairing, gourmet dinner experience that brings together two nationally recognized guest presenters. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is, this is a big one. This, we're, as Rick said, we're, we're very excited about this. It's, we've got a five-course dinner planned. We've got to curate, obviously with curated wine pairings. The, the seating will be limited. It, it really, I think, depends so much on how much the word gets out because I think that once it really gets out, it's going to take off.
To be honest, there's 30 seats is all. So.
And, and it's, it ends up being really kind of a, a great value. There are featured winemakers, a man named Malik Amrani. Malik has a fascinating story. He was born in Morocco and, and as a boy planned to be a doctor and then he moved to New York at, at age 17 and worked his way up as a sales professional through Louis Vuitton, Moet &amp; Hennessy. And, you know, did something that nobody ever does, people dream of, but he just did it. He moved out to, he flew out to Napa and ended up acquiring his own, his own winery. And he's been profiled in Forbes, it's either three or four times. But this is somebody, you know, in, this is somebody who our distributors come through and they, and they, they'll bring winemakers for, for me to meet. And it's, it's, for me, that's like meeting the rock stars. He's very dynamic. He's a very dynamic, very dynamic presenter, very dynamic individual. If you asked me beforehand, six months ago, who I most would want to do wine dinner, he would be at the top of the list. So I can't say enough about him. Very excited about that. And then we, our distributor ended up getting one of our local luminaries, as far as a chef is concerned, Thomas Bamer. Thomas has been, is part of the ownership team of Wondrous Collective, who are, who are now the new occupants of Revolve Hall. And Thomas has his own really impressive pedigree as well. He's a four times James Beard Award nominee. Twice he appeared on the TV show, Beat Bobby Flay. He did win once. He, he have to beat another chef to, to play Bobby, to cook against Bobby Flay. And he did that the first time and, and was, was ousted by Bobby Flay. But the second time, he not only beat that first chef, but he came back and he, and he beat Bobby Flay as well. So.
For those who don't know Bobby, or the Food Network has this very, very popular show.
Yeah. So we're, we're extremely excited about this. It's, 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 you know, I kind of knew we'd get here, but I didn't know that it would be yet. So this is, this is kind of a, I think we look at this as a, as a feather in our cap. There's, there's a course pairings if you want to look at, you know, I, I had to, I confess, I had to actually Google some of these terms because I consider myself a foodie. But some of these I'm completely not aware of as well. So Thomas brought this, brought the menu with the pairings and so we're, we're, we're very excited about that.
I'm going to point out the vice pickleball Russian River Chardonnay. So I think that's appropriate here. So I just had to point that out.
Yeah. So as you can see, it's broiled oysters and, you know, four, Thomas Bamer's specialty is really, oops, what did I just do?
There.
Thomas Bamer's specialty is with meats. So he's very, he is a part of Revival up in the cities and he's very famous for his chicken. And also he's, he's most, he's, in talking to him, he's actually most proud of his, his status as the king of pork, which is another national competition that he won. But he's, he's very well versed with, with meats. And so we've got broiled oysters and we've got chicken and teragon capellini and duck, roast duck breast and then the beef short ribs. So it'll be a very, a very rich meal and have wonderful wines from Malik Amrani to pair with those.
And these are top-tier wines from, as you can see, the vineyard design nets right there. Howell Mountain, Carnaros, Russian River, Napa Valley, top-tier stuff.
Yeah, very much so. And, and what I'm excited about is he's a, Malik is such a dynamic voice in, in Napa. He's, he's taken a wine region that already has the respect and he's said, as, as, as the wine industry, you know, experiences its issues, he's, he's making, he's taking high-quality Napa juice and making it more affordable. So I'm, I'm just very impressed with his, his approach to, to, to wine. And then this is, it's on the 7th of October, on Tuesday, 6:30 to 9:30 at Revolve Hall. There is limited seating and.
Yeah, you can purchase tickets on our website. We also have an e-commerce site that is shop.applevalleyliquor.com. So either way, it'll get it there. The QR code's there. And Revolve Hall, we're excited about it because we're, you know, enjoying an Apple Valley staple. So very excited about it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Also, our Bergman.
I have a question that has kind of been on my mind and I've been to a few of these wine tastings. Not so many of the food, you haven't had a lot of those. A question came to me and I go, oh, it's interesting. So if one was not able to go to a wine tasting, let's say it's over at Valleywood, and when we have gone, you get a list and get to taste the wines and you get, there's one price and another price, what it normally sells for and what it is for that day. Is there any thought brought into it? If some people cannot go to that wine tasting, but would still like to get that price for the wine, is there something built in that they can do it or they cannot? Or can you think about it?
We can think about it. I mean, generally, it's of the time of the event, events initials, right? I don't know if I want to open that can, but you know, it might be something we can talk about, some way to do that in a way that works for everyone. I don't know exactly how we'd facilitate it, but you know, it's, it's something we can definitely think about. And which we did forget to say also, special event pricing at this, we didn't even talk about that. But definitely all the wines will be at really, really top good prices. So, yeah.
Great. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Grandal.
I have no idea. Three of us might want to attend for our, for our calendar here.
Should we, should we just add it to the calendar and be safe?
I think we should. I mean, I have no clue. I mean, we haven't talked about it, but you never know if all of a sudden three of us go on and buy tonight and all of a sudden it's an open meeting.
That's a good idea. We'll, we'll note that when we get to the calendar and get it added. Thank you. I didn't even think of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I believe our police chief has an update as well.
We do.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. One final reminder and invite to the public to come join us at our police operations facility open house next Tuesday, September 30th, from 5:00 to 7:00. It will be a beautiful night, much like tonight. We are inviting folks to park at Eastview High School, which is immediately across the street. We can help them get across the street and onto the campus there. It's hard to compete with a liquor store and a food and wine pairing event. We will not have wine. We will not have five courses of James Beard food, but we will have free hot dogs and some chips for folks to, to come and.
Some of us, that's very more our speeds. So it works out.
Yes. So we'll have, we'll have food there onsite. Probably have, probably 15 or 20 of our staff members working throughout the event. So it's a great chance to come and first off, see our new wonderful building out there. But more importantly, get to know some of our folks that are working hard for us out on the street. We're looking forward to seeing folks out there. Kind of taking a, out of the, the, a bag out of the trick from the fire department with the fire open houses are very successful, a lot of fun. We're hoping to see a lot of people there next Tuesday.
Great. Thank you. Look forward to it. Councilmembers, any, I think it was last staff update, Tom, correct? Nothing else? Councilmembers, anything?
I do. I just want to thank, how many staff helped on the, our fall cleanup? Because I took two pickup loads and so I really appreciated the cleanup. And I know it's a huge day for staff that are working all day Saturday. So I don't know, do we have an estimate on how many of our staff were working? Charles?
Eighteen.
How many?
Charles was there all day, I believe, right?
Eighteen, all staff people.
Yeah, anyway, thank you. Thank you. It was a great day.
Yep, it was.
And I was there at 8:00 because I had two techs. I was going to do.
I was there about 10. So that was right. You guys did a good job. Got everybody in and out quick. And there's a shred event this weekend, I believe. All right? Because we couldn't get it all in.
October 11th.
October 11th, that's right. So it's coming up sometime soon. We'll talk about it later. Thank you. The only other item I had was just to note that on our consent agenda, we did approve the bike pad agree, update that was discussed in an informal several weeks ago. And I just want to recognize the multiple staff and our advisory committee members who also participated in getting that work done. It was a fair amount of effort from a fair amount of people. And so thank you, everybody, for that time. With that, if we don't have any other comments, we have, our next item is to approve the calendar of upcoming events. Our next city council meeting, informal meeting, is Thursday, October 9th at 5:30. And our next regular city council meeting is Thursday, October 9th at 7:00 p.m. And we'd be looking for a motion to approve the calendar of upcoming events, adding the wine pairing event on October 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grandal, second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries. And then the last is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
From Councilmember Grandal, second from Councilmember Melander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries. Thank you.
All this meeting in order of the Apple Valley Economic Development Authority. This is the meeting of September 25th, 2025. First order tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Any changes from staff? From the commission? I would like to move on the consent agenda, item number three B, to the regular agenda so that we get one presentation on, on that item. Any other changes suggested?
No, I will move the approval of the agenda with your recommendation to move three
I'll second it.
E to regular agenda.
Motion by Hoopah, second by Grandal. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. And the consent agenda item, then the remaining item is, oh, we had that, we'll move on to the regular.
I'll move the consent agenda. We've got the minutes left on there.
Move the, that's right. Okay, thank you. Moved in second by Hoopah and Grandal on the consent agenda item. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we move on to regular agenda. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. We have before you tonight a very quick action to authorize the president and the executive director to execute what we, we indicated in your packet report, a plan development agreement and also developers agreement. You just saw the presentation, most of you did, for the, and for any members of the audience who would like to get this recap. Again, we're talking about the 15584 Gaslight Drive site, commonly referred to as the Gaslight Site. This site was authorized with the, the new zoning, the new site and building plan. Again, the reminder, this is a 3.1 acre site, just over 55,000 square foot, five-story building, 144 units. Again, the 250 underground parking spaces. You're not making any changes or, we're not recommending anything under this presentation tonight. It's just simply authorizing, again, your execution or approval of that PUD, PD agreement and the developers agreement, which is part of the process of being the owner of the site as EDA. So it's just authorizing your execution. If you'd liked any more information on the site and building plan review or any of the agreements that are in your packet, I'm happy to answer those as well as our city attorney. With that, I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
Questions? Mr. Menetti, this is something that we were looking for as a city.